The event that I'm wishing I could have. So we're prepared. All. For this. It was not. No, I never heard it. Uh, it moved into the other.
Oh, it was wrong. Oh, I already voted.
Oh, yeah.
No, no, I'm not. Evening and welcome to the call round. Good for reading this morning. Thank you. What will you do this? It's a very public.
Thanks.
Um, we. We have a little bit of a. Well, agenda that I go through, we don't have any policy hearings. So although we're in the agenda, and of course, we're going to open the line for questions on the president's. Before I ask this ball to be adjourned, does anyone have a bill of support? Or I'm going to raise the question about it. Um, I have a small.
Thank you, Mayor Cheryl. I would ask the board to approve the regular board trust evening. The public hearing minutes of the accident filed on Tuesday, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. And the special board trust evening is that a proposal to the NYU's like documentation services. Fell on Tuesday, January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. So.
Second. Any discussion? For favor?
Uh.
Against? Both of the candidates.
I would ask the board to approve the schedule of the town's table as follows. General funds, seven hundred forty-three thousand, two hundred thirty-six dollars in oil debt. Full fund zero, capital fund, sixty-seven thousand, two hundred twenty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. For grand total of eight hundred and nine thousand, four hundred sixty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents.
What was the resolution?
Second.
Any discussion? Ball?
Justice Combaño, Justice Chiaro, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to either approve or ratify requests to use public facilities subject to the C P C insurance and C P C. Partner, the side lines at Convent. Oh. Thank you.
Any discussion? Just by bringing you all this. For favor?
Aye.
Against? Both of the candidates.
I would ask the board to approve the request named below from the Nassau County Board of Elections. The village facility that specified unauthorized village clerk to find that all stated regions.
For favor?
Second.
Any discussion? For favor?
Aye.
Against? Both of the candidates.
I would ask the board to authorize the payment of the unused current crow's for retirement fee regularly entered at January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. In accordance with the C S B A collective offering, free maintenance presented. How long has the mission?
Second. Any discussion? This wall?
Justice Combaño, Justice Chiaro, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl. I would ask the board to accept the length of the time from down the Murphy and the thirty points years of service. Back of February, late twenty twenty-three, and authorize the payment of the unused current crow of effective that environment, twenty twenty-three. In accordance with the C S B A collective offering, free maintenance presented.
For those who retire? No. What was the resolution?
Second.
Any discussion? For, for what?
Justice Combaño, Justice Chiaro, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to approve that the well-listed individual can be appointed as inspectors of election for their village elections to be held on Tuesday, November first, twenty twenty-three. The compensation of one hundred and forty dollars per day on election day. How long has that? I'll say that.
Any discussion? This wall?
Justice Combaño, Justice Chiaro, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to duly acknowledge that filing of the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, ten fifty-seven roll filed on Wednesday, February first, twenty twenty-three. That the village clerk, in accordance with the provisions of section three oh five of the real property test.
For favor, resolution?
Second.
Any discussion? Ball?
Justice Combaño, Justice Chiaro, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize to settle the tax origin for property known as section thirty-two, block forty-five, block sixteen, and section thirty-two, block seventy-five, lots fourteen and three fifty. The three fifty-one, known as Questifers Titan L L C, in a low sum run of refund of twenty-five thousand dollars for lots sixteen, covering tax years two thousand sixteen, seventeen, through twenty nineteen, twenty. And forty-five thousand dollars for lots fourteen and three fifty-one, covering tax years sixteen, seventeen, twenty twenty-three, two twenty-two, twenty-three. And proceeding from the named tax year shall be hereby discontinued. How long has that been issued?
Second. Any discussion? Ball?
Justice Combaño, Justice Chiaro, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to approve the proposal from Navy Communications for the purchase, installation, and configuration of a new facility, VTR Max console with camera and motorola radio infrastructure system. As for financing on the New York State contract, P C six eight seven two-two and P C six eight seven two-zero. And the total amounts of one hundred fifty-four thousand, eight hundred fifty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. They used by the police and private parties, communication systems.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? Ball?
Justice Combaño, Justice Chiaro, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl. Would ask the board to approve the proposal of that. That. With the purchase of installation of every online workstation so that dispatches say, member police department under the New York State contract, P C six eight three two four. And the total amount of forty-seven thousand, three hundred and two dollars. How long has that been issued? Second.
Any discussion? Ball?
Justice Combaño, Justice Chiaro, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to present the resolution, twenty twenty-two dash one forty-eight. Since the veteran unable to deliver the two police vehicles over the tiny now that were born on the twelve nineteen, twenty twenty-two. For similar to the O C's cooperative bidding program as a bid number nineteen. Twenty dash forty-five, the amount of ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. In fact, more to authorize the purchase of one Chevy Tahoe, which equal with the amount of seventy-five thousand, six hundred eighty-seven dollars. For Whitmore, oil group underneath of state office of general contract, P C, J number one, six, zero. How long has that been issued? Second.
Any discussion? Just a point of comparison of this. The two cars for ninety-five thousand were not fully integrated. While the one we're getting now is fully integrated, it costs about a visual. Twenty thousand dollars for the car, so. It's actually a difference of about fifteen hundred dollars. Aye. For what?
Justice Combaño, Justice Chiaro.
Aye.
Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize the purchase of Flo Car, leaving units as described in the D E O and associated proposals. In the amounts of forty-six thousand, five hundred forty-eight thousand and ten cents. To be located at one of the little hockey field and two, we call it. How long has that been issued?
Second. Any discussion? This wall?
Justice Combaño, Justice Chiaro, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize the purchase of a copy and using score board for the hockey break at the residence of Nivo, leaving that for seventeen thousand, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, seventy-five cents. Funded by the community that is lost.
What was the resolution?
I'm glad you're second.
Any discussion? This wall?
Justice Combaño, Justice Chiaro, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to approve the village to enter into an agreement with National Grid where a national grid will temporarily restore road work on their experience in four parts. To make the agreement due to their twenty twenty-two yet may in place in the project, with the understanding that the village will be responsible to restore these roads, none of them. And National Grid will provide in the amount of two hundred seventy-six thousand, five hundred twenty-three dollars and thirty-two cents. Made payable to the village of four parts and what the rights remain of the village administrator, by that agreement. How long has that? I'll say that.
Any discussion?
Justice Combaño, Justice Chiaro, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl.
I know that there's much, uh, superintendent Canadian is still doing it too bad. Still administrated bad. Uh, we've worked on doing that and, uh, good progress going forward and, uh. Just thinking out my thoughts, maybe we're a little bit better. That is a lot of order for us, because that was, uh, definitely made by Helen Longbody.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start after our fire department. On January two hundred, Captain Cook of the rescue company passed away. Captain Cook was well find in the rescue with fire departments and village during his forty-year career here. Captain Cook was known for his strong leadership, expertise, instructional training skill, and kindness to the caring of words of all. Captain Cook was honored and fire department service attended by the chiefs, rescue company, both of the department, and village board members, as well as the faithful within. As Captain Cook and his family left rural park, they had none of the company left of march, January, January, and spring, spending jerk off July. Proudly displayed by the fire park and rural park fire departments. Was an honor to join our fire department, with the park fire department and Mayor Vance Gerald, and saluting and honoring Captain Cook. On that very day. Our fire department faces another busy weekend on Saturday, February fourth, and Sunday, February fifth. On Saturday, ten poles included a smoking ignition in the house. Two carbon monoxide poles. Two mutual aid poles to my house, fire development, which was quickly resolved. And the gas that we fell on was terrace, as well as five minutes. Sunday became an early group department with a two A M mutual aid pole debacle. For a massive multiple alarm fire had been running for eight hours and watching. Lions company responded for four hours. On standby status, reliant they inserted a rasengan, what we call, since rasengan will be your two new five with the fire going in there. Five photo lions for their very important assistance that night. At five thirty A M on Sunday, the N Y U land ambulance began responding to park poles first before it's. On Sunday, they went to the house fire, an ambulance, and a one man who weren't part of the house fire, both of which were quickly resolved. Four less people. Because two of them were simultaneously both in NYU and four part of the middle was responding. And four part responded to another pole while in NYU, which are transported and resolved. Their coordination and teamwork have already been very effective. Today, our department by the mutual aid assistance from New York Park House and back yard primary, as well as a very curious collective. We thank the entire park, including, uh, we thank the entire department for responding to the forty seventeen, four, on Saturday, Sunday, including, uh. As well as welcoming the N Y U, NYU, NYU, the entities and charities, and we have a distinct rural park. For our department, Colin Ward, it's been here and that you will continue to double between the bottles, Julie, the bottles, to U W, the five hundred bits. As you said, this is, uh. Thank you for our evidence and difficulties for following your good recycling program, died on the server. Your separation of your paper article materials. On your recycling days and your plastic, plastic, metal recycling on Wednesday, which is very effective. They are the U W recycling standards, who has expressed their appreciation of all. For making one easy style when you can start from initially, and that goes like this. Great hands for all, or U W super company, having made, that is, for a lot of significant, you know, Brady, his professors, Kenneth, and Joe, um, Charles. For the changes of commerce and our difficulty, and what happens in the commerce with the federal meeting, I have plenty of experience in the offices of all the directors. Congratulations, though, to President Corrigan, President Corrigan Grant, and also to the authorities. My friend, which can be aroused, which shows to block down the old management, Director Miles Jacob, who is currently in defense. Director, uh, the civil, uh, rural park diner, who directly holds the house, and will. Chambers are also the new director of the chat room, and Kelly, the, 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 the director of the books. Of one, one town, body, and some division coaching. Next up will be plans for one to twenty twenty-three, and four parts, even however many we do, lots of details. And that one kind day, only from today, be sure to shop and buy, well. And for the conservation society, F C S. Well, those who are still enjoying their time, you are one of the most important sanctuary. You can choose by joining F C S for the annual international race, race backlog of. On Friday, February seventeenth, from noon to four P M. Saturday, eighteen, noon to three P M, and Sunday, nineteen, noon to two P M. During ninety-two gardens, main entrance on the ballpark like. Um, to the swittem the ballpark own down, having the bird expert and enthusiasts. Fly the birds to the gardens, they are fine, have, have nesting and keep followers. Don has very least of contacts, some stories to share. Don't forget your naturalness to be included in our bird camps, be sure to submit work camps. To the recreation center, uh, up till one P M on Monday, April forty twenty. Check out the great bird backlog, bird count, pet, bird count dot org, for more information, whether or not by year, it's a catalog of the. And don't forget, get the fluid to keep our birds healthy and happy with the off winter. Thanks.
Thank you, Governor. Justice Chiaro? The police department must report the following year-to-date stats. Our police department has performed two hundred sixty-three traffic stops. They have issued one hundred eighty-four sunnies. Highlighting some of these sunnies, there's seventy-four for stop sign violations. Seven for speeding violations, one for driving on and obfuscated. They have also issued twelve hundred and seventeen parking sunnies. Some of which include violations of overnight parking for the parking lot. As a reminder, if you feel like parking violation has decreased one hundred dollars. Our police department also performed two hundred thirteen direct controls of various reported conditions throughout the village. The department had also applied for and was awarded funding by two grants. With the assistance of former St. Senator Anna Catherine, the first grant, the amount of fifty thousand dollars was for an upgrade in emergency operations center. The second, the amount of six hundred four thousand dollars was from the division of criminal justice service in the New York State, the earth, the body, and the harness. Thank you to co-senator, uh, Anna Catherine, and thank you to D C J for awarding these grants. Thank you all to the police commissioner, and all members of the police department for all the efforts to keep our community safe. For the building department. Architecture will be rolling, we meet him on Wednesday, February twenty-second. And more with other applications, the free.
So this man is meeting at patronage shelves and you campaigned on, you interrupt me and you say, vote, vote, vote. I'd like to know what you were saying to.
Justice Stewart.
We don't have to get anything done. I think for. The votes, you have one minute and forty-five seconds.
I'd like to thank Lieutenant Kevin May for coming out and discussing our public works department, as well as the new aspects of, what has been reported to be a very, uh, effective new recycling programs going over. Um, I would also like to thank Mr. Larry King and Chief of Department Jeff Johnson for their thoughtful presentations regarding the NYU land ambulance at that time, proposal. And for taking questions from those in attendance. Additionally, thanks to Mr. Greg Hand, President of the Northern Democratic Association, and his work for their work in increasing membership and bringing out speakers. The February sixteenth speaker will be Jen the Senate Town, Northern Democratic Superbowl. Seven o'clock, full building, water log. For the recreation center. Uh, last week on Monday, we had a field peace meeting. As you can see from the number of permits listed in tonight's agenda, I don't feel the actual management, the management. There was really nothing better than going to the hall, I can see dozens, dozens of kids playing and learning and getting along. The entire village is grateful to the coaches who volunteer their time so that kids can have these valuable experiences. Uh, additionally, we have a recreation committee meeting with ballot. This is an opportunity for the recreation staff, uh, leading committee on happenings of the rest. Right now, we have several projects taking place. The multi-purpose rankings moving along, I think, the five look safety and verification project is nearing completion. L E T sport letting installation and work will begin on renovating two of the fields for motherly, but short. Opening day of our food is must been four months away. Quite a comforting thought as we suffer through all the temperatures this day. Information on all things food related will be forthcoming shortly, keep an eye on our email and on our social media accounts for announcements. For the railroad, the village is in the process of attempting to set up another meeting with the N T A, three states, and on our way around. And at the county to discuss the tunnel three eight and our options. I will of course keep you updated. As always, the group, I encourage residents, we judge what leads to the N T A with questions and concerns, as well as the former board. As we have found that it is a great factor for residents to communicate directly with the N T A. They can be reached at contact at M T A dot com, or by phone at five one six two zero three four nine five. It is an automated response, but if you guys have more options, and then you found that same concern, we all get to speak to each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Justice Chiaro, I'd like to mention for those of my fellow Northland residents. To join the Northern District Association, it's ten dollars, ten dollars a year. Just for the fact that you get a newsletter, which is really impressive, haven't seen it.
The new format is really something.
Yeah, it's really started a lot of good information, this latest information. Not just about Northland, about the village, but they've done a really thorough, uh, with that newsletter, so it's ten dollars. Do it for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Uh, with respect to the ballpark library, uh, the construction is ongoing as moving people off. The, uh, on the new front entrance, the rampage is in place and is set. The new stand and rail should be installed in the next two weeks or so. The new roof is done and it's going to take, and it's upcoming to be finished, and the roof section will be done. We remind everyone, the entrance of bookshop are temporarily located in the back of the building, won't control their new site, and the library is fully open and operating in low schedule. Our library has a growing list of museum passes, which currently has, has is available for twenty-four museums. It's a great opportunity to teach the kids and explore all types of learning. The history and all that page, to see animals based on the trepid, to fly Friday, even fly Friday's museum, and maybe tomorrow. Please visit the library or the website for the complete list and reserve passes. The annual A R P tax assistance program was back this year, is available on Tuesdays at ten A M to eight P M. The appointments must be scheduled in advance. Some upcoming events and places are February ninth, Defensive Driving Place, February eleventh, English language honor class. The movie matinee Monday on February thirteenth is Top Gun Maverick. February fifteenth at one P M, New York Lights, uh, Joseph. Yes, and now see that ball is ready to screw that up, discuss ways to discuss tactics on the climate impact. And many other activities for the children and adults, as always, please visit the library website or visit the library itself, or full list and to sign up. Also, the library is closed Monday, February twentieth, for President's Day. With respect to four road studio, uh, Jen Green recently held the annual staff meeting, the four nineties, the guitar staff, the green chop, they do all year long. And to recognize certain individuals who are about to be on. Congratulations to all the award winners, and thank you to the entire studio staff for keeping our studio up and running. Four road studios have student opportunities, they are currently recruiting four hundred and seventy, fifteen students volunteers, fifteen years of age or older. Involved a lot of student volunteers who are interested in learning, developing production. Please call five one six three two six four one five zero, or email four B S at four B S dot org. In my opinion, it's my fifth anniversary of the studio, only a long last program of the night will be a Netflix show, looking back on the first twenty-five years. That those shows we missed are at the same, for the last local, the virus issues from our operation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, I want a couple things with regard to, uh, Nira and the, uh, go off the bottom name, the Emerald. They have, uh, finished the dirt in the bar, as of yesterday, they have put in the holes on the top of the bar for the new fence. I'm not sure if they need to do the front of work today, but that's moving along. I'd like to thank them for all their efforts in getting that project done. Uh, separately, uh, two items with the governor's, uh, proposed, uh, budget for this year. I guess on a good news front. Um, she seems to be supportive of Nira's request for a four hundred fifty-five million dollar loan. That Nira will be using to, um, put in, or redo, re adjusting tracks, put in a new track for winter racing. And they can most importantly, uh, put in a new grandstand, um, which will be a lot smaller. What they hope to do is, um, at that point, close afterthought and, uh. Ensure that Belmont is a premier racing facility, not only in New York, but, um, across the world. Um, obviously, Belmont Station can be held there, but there will be other effects, including, uh, Grease Cup, which has not been here in, I think, over twenty years. So they're real excited about that, um, hopefully, if that goes through, I think, that'll be great for Paul Hall and the surrounding area. You want more information on that, visit the website, the O B O Racing, which, uh, provides more details of the project, inclusive of, uh, the impact of this project and the impact of states of, uh, both races. Separately, and concerning is the government proposal for the Halloween Top Hat. Which she is trying to push through, that will assist that on the fourth of three years. All of this of howl needs to increase their housing stock by three percent. Specifically, areas that surround a train station. Um, inclusive of, uh, rural park and the Dallas train station. Within a half mile radius of those train stations. The number of units needs to increase to fifty units per acre, just to size that, a hundred by a forty lot is about eight or ten on an acre. So an increase in housing stock by five times within areas and surrounding trains. Um, clearly, a lot of issues with that, inclusive of entire infrastructure issues, whether it's roads, schools, uh, water source, and, um, none of that has been addressed. I attended a press conference on Friday that was run by Senator Lawton's. Also dependents with Senator Ro, obviously Senator, Tricia Kim, Derek, and Patrick, along with Senator Manon Rock. Uh, I know that our national county legislature legislators, Rich Nicoello and Jonathan Frank separately sent out an email on this topic. And, uh, I'm in the process of learning more about this, and, uh, will be writing letters. And we'll make sure that this information gets out, um, more broadly, because this is, uh, a very serious concern for not just Paul Hall. Um, but the entire metropolitan area, and it dramatically changed the suburbs. The folks in the city who works with it. Um. So more follow on that, but, uh, please, um, keep in tune with the email that you're getting from the local elected officials, if those team like. Everyone against this, uh, inclusive of, uh, at that press conference. The Nassau apparently Bill Official Association President is there, read a very strong message. And, uh, probably got twenty, twenty-five other mayors there, and I've also got some folks from mayors of, uh, across around the communities. Um, everyone very concerned about this. It just doesn't fit, and override all locals only who has a dependent effect for way more than a hundred years. Uh, with that, and it's most, most of the questions, what do you think?
So.
For favor?
I should.
Uh, just to reverse what, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to have a question for comments, who are going to be doing this? If so, if you read your hand, we'll leave it on. No, okay, thank you. Anyone here who has all any questions, comments, or? Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, bye. Tony Cipriano, I've been up here about twenty years, about the margin of the nation. Uh, the problem I have here is that Little Neck, Jericho, and Tulip. Everybody, a lot of people in that left turn lane on Little Neck. A lot of them proceed into Tulip. And, uh, sometimes they get close together, it could be a side way. Couple of examples, it was, uh, S U B in a left turn lane. Seated at the tulip, and over to the carnation, uh, lane, but straight across it, the coffee magnates of World Brothers. seeded into Tula, then over to the carnation, uh, lane, but straight across it to the coffee lane, obviously, bullet flowers. You know, could have got, somebody could have got hurt. Uh, I've seen, uh, school buses, commercial vehicles doing the same thing, going right across, one hundred is a smart, smart guy. In a sports car in a left turn lane, Little Neck, light change, he proceeded into Tula, and I was going down towards the leads, he, uh, he stopped at the later Tyson, in a left turn lane, and that's why he turned and breathe, he shot straight across, uh, going through, uh, Tula, and went through the Fletcher Heights by the lead. But the problem is the left turn lane at Little Neck, it happens all the time. One day it's gonna be a serious accident.
This is from left hand, turning, Tom South, all the way back, okay. That is my, let me try.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a serious accident one day, and someone's gonna get hurt or killed. Uh, I work for the city, uh, I've been about years, I'm a little site taking knowledge. So, when I see little things like this, I'm very proactive about it, you know? And, uh, I made a photo, pictures of, uh, what I think we should do here. Like I said, I'm sure. Yeah. That. That, uh, I made up that sign. You know. I made up that sign. Now, that S U V that you see in the picture, that, that S U V is going from the left turn lane from Little Neck into Tula. I just happened to catch it going along, uh, going, doing a wrong way.
So, I know, I don't know about it, wait, so, people are coming down the left hand lane and going straight down to the books and making a.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's, like I said, one day it's gonna be a serious accident, something could be hurt, like I said, see school button, uh, do the same thing, the mar, marginal vehicles, you know?
So, see, this is technically how our picture, right?
Yeah, it's the bar on site. You have Nassau and the city coming together right at that intersection, so draw that there, responsibilities at that intersection, but obviously, the other side, the yellow stripe is us. So where they're coming to is us, but that, right there, that's the one or five for the, for the wing.
But the suggestion is.
The pole did, the pole, the pole that pole is sending that to us, yeah, so we, like, left turn out of the, the intersection four, is there a left turn out of?
Is it what turned out?
Yeah, good, I, yeah, so.
Everybody goes on their own.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know.
It's like three lanes there.
Yeah, they go left turn, you know, Jericho, Tula, and right.
There's exactly, reading angles of all the.
The other one.
Yeah.
Stay on the line, I never went to the job.
The way I made it, like, a sign like that, how much of a sign like that for us? And then, you know, the, the other thing is, yeah, I know, we're talking about. I can't, I can't make it, I'm talking about political problems. That, that's a well, yeah, I mean, uh, I guess that one day it's gonna be a serious. I might as well get a heart of the table.
Good idea, I mean.
Yeah, yeah. Time, if it's a problem like this, you always need first conclusion is an engineer's push, which you propose.
Okay.
Sign. You know, we'll give, uh, this is what's been back to the pool. Set what, in Nassau County. But basically, this is Nassau County and.
All right, we'll get to that soon.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Anyone else here who's called, nothing to comment? All right, thank you, and, uh, you see, you're doing great.
Progress.
Well, thank you. Oh.